So, welcome everyone to the
That's interesting.
To the meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Amber, would you lead us in there?
Sure. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we could use a motion for the approval of minutes.
Hi, motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Second, motion and second on favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, great. We'll move next to the, it looks like our main course tonight is the public hearing with dessert down below. And we'll probably get to the dessert tonight, so we'll start with Go Civil.
Just one second. We're getting cameras on, just one second.
Dallas doesn't want
If you're a movie star, you need the cam.
That's right.
He's on, he's on a most wanted poster.
It's not true.
You what, not true?
You rolling now? All right, you're up.
Dallas Buckner, Go Civil. So this is an annexation out off of 3,000 North. And the blue that you see on there is the current city boundary. And so, and then the red is what we're looking to annex. So my client has two parcels right there. We're within the city's declaration boundary. The intersecting road's Northfield. I forget what it's, I forget what Northfield's number name is. 400 West. And that's pretty much it. It's a pretty, pretty simple one.
Where, where is this?
So it's 3,000 North and Northfield Road.
Up by the school garage.
Yeah, north of the school garage.
And he is planning to do what with this or just?
Um, so we're, we're planning to come through with a zone change as this keeps progressing. So we can stack the timeline a little bit. But it's general plan for residential estates, I believe. And we're planning to do a zone change to commer, or to industrial, to light industrial. But it's at the extent of the airport zones, so.
So they kept build residential?
Yeah, so these, so these parts, this field right here is what we're annexing. And then this is what's in the city. So this is everything north of 3,000 for a, for a small portion is zone for residential estates. But this zone, I think, only allows for one unit per five acres.
Is that because no utilities or something or?
No, it's because of the airport zones.
In that particular zone?
Yeah, in the, in the, because that one's the, that's the instrument zone. And then, well, so the instrument zone and then, I forget what the zones are. There's the traffic or the approach zone.
Right.
Yeah.
So the approach zone would allow to Dallas's point, one unit per five acres. And that's, that's basically due to aircraft operations.
And so that's, that's in this little triangle right here. And then the instrument zone, does it have the same requirements?
If I recall correctly, we, there would be no housing in that area.
Yeah.
Uh, so it'd be limited to commercial industrial type uses.
Yeah.
So I can ask you, do we have any say in those? Or is that just, you want an airport, this is what you're gonna do?
Well, currently, that's, that's the ordinance that we have. To be frank with you, I thought a lot of this was, was really dictated by the FAA. You know, thou shouls. But it, it looks to be that we do have a little bit more say in what goes on. And I, I know Reed, Reed at the county is potentially working on some changes that he'd like the city to entertain. But there's, there would still be restrictions. And, and the idea is obviously there's nuisances associated with the airport. We want the airport to be able to be successful and operate freely without a lot of complaints. And then the other issue is, um, you know, just a danger to the folks on the ground and the airplanes above, so.
So with some of the discussions that we're in with the county and our airport director, and we've got one of our council members who's also been involved in those discussions with us. Well, I anticipate that there will be some type of revision to these airport overlay zones. It'll be coming to you for, for your input and consideration.
Good, thank you.
I have a question for the good count, the good chairman. Was the school district still planning to move your bus garage?
Yes.
Somewhere out in that?
Yeah, it'll just be by the, where the warehouse, school warehouse is now.
Just consolidate.
So two blocks.
You're just gonna consolidate everything, okay.
So yeah, as you, as you zoom in and you can see the parcel areas. So this line right here, everything southeast of that. So this would be eligible for one house per five acres. And our total area is 18. So this is maybe five acres and some change. And then beyond that, there'd be no residential allowed, so.
That would make sense, would it?
Yeah, and so that's why we're planning to come through probably in the coming weeks and start through sketch and then planning commission as the annexation gets a little further along for a zone change to zone change both of those, both of these parcels to industrial.
So you're looking at bringing it in initially as annex transition then? And then you'll request the appropriate zone or?
Does the city allow us to establish a zone with, with the annexation now?
It, uh, the way I read the ordinance, it prefers that method.
Okay.
But you're, but you're on city council tomorrow.
Okay.
So we'll have to.
Yeah, probably, probably better to just go through with the annexation for now.
Okay, yeah, because I know in the past it always had to come in annexation, transition. And then, so we always did annexation first and then zone change after. Um, which if that's changed, then going forward, I'll?
Yeah, we can run them concurrently.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I guess for now with the timeline we're on, we're just annexing. But we plan to bring it in for industrial.
City, any concerns? What are your?
No, I, I think we've, it's been noticed properly. I believe this one even went to the county for approval.
Yes.
Um, we had
Why is that?
Can you zoom out a little bit? Kent?
Giant.
So, see where it says the instrument, I A Z, instrument approach zone there?
Yes.
That's what the state code would define as a county peninsula. I E, the county land is creating a peninsula of city land on three sides. Uh, so we can't create or exasperate that unless the county approves. So this peninsula of city land created a peninsula. Uh, and the math is a little convoluted in state code, but he's already been to the county to get that approved.
Okay, thank you. Every day I learn something new.
I just have a general question for engineering and city planning and legal, if possible. When, when these proposals come up to annexing, what are the pros and cons to annexing little spots here and there as far as cost to the city? Are there assets or is it, do we get some taxation off that? Or is it a negative because we have to take care of snow removal and all that stuff? Or does it just kind of X out? What are the pros and cons?
Well, certainly the more hodgepodge annexations are, the, the more expensive it is to provide services, right? It's always best if we can kind of grow out in a, in an organized fashion. However, you know, we, we do have, in this case, the, in this particular case, the roadway along their frontage on 3,000 North is already annexed into the city. And it came in with the annexation of the property to the south of the roadway. So this doesn't change anything with the roadway responsibilities that we would have. We already have those. Um, you know, the utilities, you know, that, we have some utilities that are existing, others that are planned. But that's, that is, um, you know, that, that's all in place. We, we know how this can be served with city utilities, so they're not really a concern there.
Have there been some annexations in the last few years that have gone through that have really burdened the city or not too bad?
Not that I'm aware of. I think Kent hit the point is, one of the primary concerns is can we serve this? You know, can, can we adequately, especially from a public safety standpoint?
Sure.
The utilities are there. And, and the state kind of gives us some guidelines by telling us not to create county islands, not to create county peninsulas unless it makes sense to do so. Um, so I, I don't see any major issues with this particular proposal.
And we do have the water and sewer both there already.
Okay, thank you.
So there are homes right there that we can see and I, I know right where that's at. But I mean, how does that affect the homes and do we, you know? I mean, does their opinion matter? You know, we're talking about industrial. Is there a way to, you know, to have it be kind of conducive to?
I think that's a good question. Um, you know, we're, we're still quite rural out there. Uh, we have it master planned for very low density now. Uh, with the airport overlay as it's currently written, it certainly restricts that residential capacity out there. But with the zone change not following that general plan, I think when they do come in for a zone change, that is open for discussion if they want to go to industrial. Uh, how do we mitigate potential uses? I mean, are we looking at a, I know they're not gonna do a gravel yard, but we're gonna talk about these things a little bit. Um, are we looking at noxious uses right next to residential? I think that's on the table with the general plan proposal.
I think one thing you want to look at, and maybe Kent, if you could flip back to the zoning one and then turn on the general plan. So the way that the city's general plan is laid out based on that airport zone is it puts almost everything in, so if you zoom in to, like, if we look at the south side of 3,000 where those houses are at, what's the, that purple is probably I N M two?
This one?
Yeah.
Maybe turn, maybe turn off the zoning.
Looks like, Kent.
Let me make it easier to read. There we go.
Oh, yeah, okay, there we go.
So basically, yeah, it's a light manufacturing.
Yeah, so everything, so if you X out of that now and you see all that purple, that's all general planned for industrial. And then our argument for going to industrial is just saying that, hey, even though this is shown as residential estates or low density residential, the city's ordinance doesn't allow us to build residential there anyways because of the, the airport zones. And so we were more so looking to just extend the purple through our site.
Dallas, do you have any idea what kind of industrial they're looking to do there?
I, I don't, so to the
I think that's key when you're trying to change a general plan. I mean, this is coming later, but.
Yeah, so the, this property owner, as far as I know from other projects I've done with him, is, is a storage type, that's what his main business is. And so, um,
I think there's some going in next door there, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Yeah, and so there's, on the, on the previous question of, does annexing these smaller parcels in and that kind of thing? This property as it currently sits is kind of like locked as not being able to be developed in any capacity because as soon as we go in and try to pull a permit with the bill, with the county, they're gonna say you're adjacent to the city. You've gotta go talk to the city and make sure you don't want to annex. They don't want you to annex. And then we come to the city and the city says you're within the city's annexation declaration boundary. And so even if there were, so this is not a, there's no imminent plans to do any development. It's more so, hey, if you want to ever do something on here, the city's gonna make you annex. Annexation takes six months-ish or longer. And then you've got to come through and zone change, and that takes a couple of months. And so this is really just forward thinking, saying, hey, if I ever get a wild hair to develop here, I might as well have my ducks in a row and have it annexed and zoned, so.
Yeah, I certainly know, and I haven't read this in a while, and I don't want to question you, Dallas. But if they do a subdivision here, I think that's when the county really pushes you to annex into the city.
Yeah.
I'm not convinced that's the case on a building permit, but I could be mistaken.
Yeah, and you, you might be right, but it's, to have a long skinny 18 acres like that is, and not do some kind of subdivision when you have sewer and water at the front door is a little unusual, so. But the, the main reason I wanted to just flip this on was just to show Jennifer that those houses are in future light industrial.
Yeah.
Whether they know it or not.
Right, right. I just have to protect the homeowners. Um, so with this, so the general plan right now is for a residential acre.
Low, low density, which generally translates to residential estates.
Right, okay. Um, and the master plan, I mean.
And then the city's ordinance says low density residential is fine and good, but you're in the airport zone.
Yeah.
And in the airport zone, you can only go as dense as one unit per five acres.
Right.
So I can ask a silly question, and, and I love dialogue. Is any of what they're gonna potentially do with this germane to annexation or not annexation?
I'm sorry.
Tom, what was, what was the question?
What the potential use of this property? Could we factor that into our decision for annexation or non-annexation?
Uh, you, you can consider factors, you know, in our annexation policy plan. It certainly talks about being able to serve the property. What is the character of the proposal? You, you can look at these things. Uh, it does meet the criteria, I think, to be annexed. Uh, I think maybe the zone change would be a different discussion.
Right.
That was more for future knowledge if we could use that as part of our
But it, it does say you should consider certain factors. I don't have them off the top of my head. We can bring it up, Kent, if you'd like. Um, but there's, there's kind of a laundry list we can take a look at.
Because I think it's important to know, I have some ideas. I just, this for, in the future, there might be some that are a little more controversial or something and, so.
I don't think people, knowing that that's in that airport zone, are gonna want to buy five acres and build a ranch with your acreage. That's three lots, four lots, whatever. I just can't imagine people with that kind of foresight and money wanting to build a five acre ranch underneath an airport unless they're in love with airplanes.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, and then 3,000 also is a 75 foot master planned road.
Yeah.
And right off the north exit. So I mean, as things keep developing, that's gonna be a pretty busy
I think you're looking forward. I, I think you've
I think what you may see from the county, and Kent tell me if I'm off base, is some, a proposal for higher density in these residential areas than, than the one per five. I mean, we're, we're still not looking at townhomes or apartments, but again, that's a proposal.
No, but equestrian, five acre parcels that are in here.
The other, the other factor with this is just that 3,000 North does have water and sewer in it. But the, the sewer is not, is generally not very deep. It might be deep, but 3,000 North is built up several feet and then all the land falls off to the north. So it's not, like, this property would not be a great candidate for developing because you can't sewer more than probably the front third of that, I wouldn't think, without putting some kind of lift private, whatever, which is another argument for more of an industrial where you don't have.
That's good to know.
So.
And just kind of as an FYI, this same zone that takes up most of the property they're talking about annexing, that, that's the airport overlay zone that we're in at the Diamanti Industrial Subdivision on the south side of Highway 56. And, and that ends up being a good use for property within that overlay, right?
Yeah.
So.
Any other questions from the council?
Uh, well, is it, is it okay to, to talk about just annexing it but not changing the zoning at this time?
Our, our application is just for zone, for annexation.
It's just for annexation right now? You're just saying what you would like to do in the future?
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, and we plan to come through with a zone change application.
That way your neighbors and everybody out there, these homeowners would come at that time and be able to put it.
Yeah, so as this has been advertised and as it is on your agenda, it, it really is just annexation. So it would default to the annex transition and then they'll need to request a zone in the future.
It would just be nice. I know you're thinking highest and best use, and I get it. I'm just hopeful that, you know, the, the homes are in that area. You know, they are rural and they're, I mean, not that everything remains rural, it doesn't. Uh, but if there's a way that we can look at a light industrial type of thing, you know, like you're talking about, rather than a gravel pit or rather than something that's going to be noisy and, and
Yeah, and that's, and that's the plan is just to basically, just because of the restrictions with the airport zone, where everything south of 3,000 is already for light industrial, that's where we intend to come in for I N M one, so.
I would encourage you to, maybe if these homeowners are outside the minimum requirement for notification, just as a courtesy, go out to those homeowners that are
Yeah, any of those residents that are in the county would have received a notice.
Okay.
Um, and once you get to the zone change, you know, we can look at the general plan for guidance. As an example, it does say in the I N M one, we should consider buffering residential uses that are next door. Um, certainly storage is a very benign use. Um, but as we'll talk about in just a little bit, the I N M one zone is, is a, quite an open zone now. So I could potentially allow for a lot of uses that a residential property would consider noxious, so.
Which sounds like it's a presentation for future days, is that right?
That's, I think that would be appropriate.
Did that work for you, okay?
Yes. What, to do with the zone change?
Well, we'll just consider the zone change future and anything you wanted to attach to that. Maybe that might be the time for it.
Yes, absolutely.
Let's see what the public has to say.
Yes, I was gonna say, this is a public hearing.
Come on, Tyler, you're our only hope.
Tyler, you're our only public. You got any comment? Oh.
Yes.
We won't.
He's swinging at that bitch.
Well, just, again, this is where my family's farm has been forever. It's just a little west of there. Um, the airport really restricts just about everything you can do. Um, I guess it's the government's position that it's better that people die in an airplane crash if they're at work but not asleep in their beds. It's kind of weird. So industrial uses are fine, just not residential, whatever. Um, but no, the, the other issue that you run into is if, even if they didn't want to subdivide but wanted to build in the county, there was a dollar figure. I can't remember what it is. It's in the half million, three quarter million range. If you're doing that much of capital improvements, you have to get the city's consent before the county will let you get a permit, even without subdividing. So it's, it's, if you're within the city's declaration boundary, your hands are really tied. Um, and yeah, I mean, people build out there because it's rural. Uh, I don't think they paid attention that they're in the middle of a master planned medium density area or that they're in the middle of a floodplain or anything else. But, and like Dallas said, the sewer is a major concern out there too. So everything north of 3,000 really has to have a private lift station or extend all the way to Three Peaks Elementary with their sewer line. So that ain't gonna happen. So really, you can, unless the city wants to buy the property, it needs to be an industrial use.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing, come back to the councils. Anybody want to make a motion or have a thought?
I'll make a positive recommendation for the annexation of this property.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dallas.
Thanks, Dallas. Have a good night.
Thanks, Tyler, you convinced us completely.
Yeah. He was what pushed us over the top.
He showed up.
He just missed being in this room. He wanted to get involved.
Okay, next on the agenda, it looks like we have some time to hit these two tonight. Uh, ordinance text amendment.
So, may I? May I look at your Yeah. Is, Tyler, were you planning on speaking with regard to item number four that, on pertaining to building materials tonight?
I'm here for number four.
Could we move that? So Tyler can go home to his young family?
For, yeah. Let's do it. All right, tell her she owes Tom, so let's move that. Move that now. Just, so as we talk about these, we would make, I know it's not a recommendation, but eventually it would be a recommendation to consider these to the city council.
So this is just a discussion item tonight.
All right, thank you.
All right, so thank you Chair, members of the commission. So this has been around the block a couple of times. I think last time we talked about this, we had some folks from the audience that were doing a survey of sorts. And we decided to punt this down the road until we got some feedback. I've reached out to those folks. Uh, they said they were gonna give us some, some findings from their surveys and I haven't heard anything. So here we are, that's, that's what life stands.
You didn't like the findings from the survey?
I don't know. I haven't seen them. Um, so before we go into this, I thought we might just take a quick look at the general plan. And I'll, I'll try to be brief and not read all this verbatim. Kent, could you go to the next slide? So the, the general plan's full of goals and objectives and, and, uh, and, uh, anyways, goals and objectives. Uh, so if you look at this first goal, land use goal 091.7, it talks about regulating setbacks, landscaping, art, appropriate lighting signs and other design amenities that complement and enhance the street scape and design of new development through the zoning ordinance. So when we go through these, the general plan, it's in its name. It's general. What implements these things that we worked a couple of years on back in 2022? It's the zoning ordinance. So that's, that's where the rubber meets the road, so to speak. Uh, you go to the next slide, Kent? It talks about cultural and aesthetic enrichments or hallmarks of Cedar City. Um, it says, "These factors combine to produce a community identity that's often the envy of cities throughout Utah." And when we were going through the general plan, I believe it was the chamber, they had done a, a survey that was called the Vision 2050. And it says not part of, I mean, there's many findings in this. This is just a snippet, but not the least of these was that Cedar City should focus on maintaining and improving the community aesthetics in order to enhance its festival city in brand. Um, and reestablish its reputation as the gateway to the parks. Next slide, Kent? It talks about identifying architectural and other visual qualities that will contribute to the understanding of the city's unique identity. It talks about identifying unique architectural design, natural features, land use activity and other characteristics that are desirable for preservation. Uh, and it certainly is, one of these areas mentions the downtown core. Talks about in goal 52, that we should develop design guidelines and development standards and ordinances as appropriate to protect the qualities within these areas that are valued by the citizens. And lastly, goal here 0523, says allow for the consideration of alternative design and building materials where appropriate. That's kind of right where we're at. So it's talking about the visual quality of the city is important, but we also shouldn't be absolutely too restrictive in, in what we're asking for, right? So we're, we're trying to find that balance here, I think. Uh, next slide. Talks about area specific opportunities, continuing the momentum of facade improvements, infill development, street trees and high design standards. And then it specifically mentions along historic Main Street, 200 North and the center street corridors. Uh, next slide. So when we, when going through those quickly, obviously they're, I'm kind of repeating myself, they're general. So what do we have in the zoning ordinance currently that tries to implement these overarching goals and policies? And in section 26416, we have, the ordinance starts to break down building materials and what is required speci- and what is required specifically along Main Street and two hundred north. It uses these terms preferred building materials, preferred accent materials, and discouraged, which doesn't give us a whole lot of guidance, because it doesn't say required, but it is required along Main Street and two hundred north. And these, these, so if we replace preferred with required, these are the areas that we're focusing on. Talks about corred stone, cultured stone, full brick veneer, composite lab siding, i.e. hardy plank. I don't care for having brand names in the zoning ordinance, I don't think they need to be there. Uh, architectural concrete, colored CMU, and it goes on for accent materials. And it talks about precast concrete, uh, stucco or ephes. And then it indicates only if the quality of the design merits such considerations. That is difficult for staff to deal with that kind of language.
So I have a question, how, how old is this ordinance?
Uh, it's been around as long as I have.
Okay, so it, there's a chance that, that you contractors have, you know, better, better ways towards some of these building materials that would still make it very appealing for what we're looking for.
And that's, that's where we're trying to head, so yeah, that's, that's the whole point of the discussion. Prohibited materials, plain gray, flat CMU wall, brick tiles, I'm not convinced I know what a brick tile is. If anybody else does, let me know. Metal walls and wood or glass uses more than a functional purpose or is an accent material. So there's some subjectivity in this ordinance as well, that without a design review board or something along those lines, it is difficult for staff to enforce subjectivity, right? Uh, next slide, Kent? So I think if you look at the way the ordinance is written now, I think it, it's certainly pushing you towards more traditional materials. And, and again, these are just my opinions, I think these type, the two buildings you see in front of you is, is what they, what it's pushing builders to produce on Main Street and, and two hundred north. You see the brick, you see the concrete accents, little limited use of stucco. That bottom building would certainly be cultured stone, I imagine, but that's, I think that is the goal. Next slide, Kent? I think these are the types of things that the ordinance is saying we don't want to see on Main Street and two hundred north. You know, a corrugated metal building, I think that's great in an industrial zone. You know, mirrored glass buildings, there's another metal building, probably that one in your right hand corner of your screen is probably what I might consider the overuse of stucco. That's what, uh, what the ordinance is telling us, we're, we're trying to avoid on these streets.
May I ask, what is the, the, the concern with stucco? You know, you used the term overuse, what, what is our, our?
So I, I don't profess to be an architect, architect, Tom, but I think if you look at that building where it's completely stuccoed.
I just, in California, everything is stuccoed.
I know. Right? Uh, it, it's pushing you to, to use, you know, some rock, some stone, place some visual interest in that building. Uh, a lot of cities will, will push much farther than we do as far as having offset planes and porches and other types of materials. All we're doing is talking about the materials. I don't, I don't see that there's anything wrong with stucco. We're talking about the aesthetic impact of these structures, right?
But do we want, as a, as a, as a government, do we want to get that deep into people's architectural choices?
Well, I, I think I've given you what the general plan says, I don't want to get, I don't want to get into a political discussion.
This isn't directed toward you, directed toward the overall conversation. Do we, how deep do we want to get into one's personal business when it comes to what they consider architecturally pleasing?
I think I answered that question.
Well, architecturally pleasing is very subjective, but I think you gotta get into it deep enough to preserve the intent of what you want it to look like as a city.
Yeah, I, I think, and it's not just, do I personally think this is a good look, good looking building, or it is Mr. Melling or somebody else? It, it is also, what is the overall impact of what you want Cedar City to look like? Now, a trained architect may look at that glass building and think it is beautiful. Personally, I disagree, but I, I don't know, right? Is, you know, a New York looking style building, is, is that the image of Cedar? When we go through all those goals and policies in the general plan, right? The, the quality of what people see, and Dave's not here, our economic development director, but it, it's also an economic development issue. What, if, if he or someone else, if they are trying to relocate, let's say to southwest Utah, and they're bringing their, their business here, their families here, probably trying to get their top dogs to come along with them, whoever they are, he or she may be, what they see does affect where they're going to put their money. It really does. So if, if they see a Main Street in St. George that is beautiful, it's tree lined, it has X, Y, Z amenities, and then they see Cedar and they're competitive, where might they go? Those are considerations that businesses.
Of course, I mean, Old Town Fort Collins, I mean, it's an attraction. It's beautiful, it's old.
And we're a tourist city too, so these are important things, I think.
I think that, uh, you know, part of this kind of comes down to what is Cedar City known for? What do people think about when they, when they think of driving through Cedar City? It's, it's not the modern glass building. I personally think those buildings look pretty cool, that's just my own personal opinion. But that's not the character of, of, you know, what you expect to see driving down the main drag of Cedar City, right? And so I can kind of see why the general plan would steer us away from that into something that more traditionally fits Cedar City. The same goes for the stucco. You know, when you're in, you know, parts of California, that is the historical, um, you know, look of, of the, of, of that community, right? And so that's, that's much different than that type of a treatment in Cedar City. So that's really what we're trying, trying to kind of figure out, is what, what makes sense for Cedar City? We have something right now in our ordinance, is that what's best? Or does that need some adjustment, right?
And I have, first of all, no objection that some reasonable ideas and thoughts. I just, I just want to see how far we want to go, because there's, there's places that will dictate you down to, you know, what color brick you're gonna use. And.
I think this discussion was had about the time they, someone on the south end of town started building a lighthouse in Cedar City. Because that is, that is foreign to.
And it shows how fickle everybody is, because at first everybody hated it, and now when you say you're gonna turn it on, everyone all of a sudden loves it.
It used to be an eyesore and you couldn't have lights spinning and nobody was allowed inside, and they wanted to turn it into a restaurant and have, you know, bur, meals and entertainment up there, but now it's a, it's an icon. So. What's, what's good back then is not good now?
My, my only, my only concern is, in, in, in government dictating designs, is all of us are, I'm, I'm not colorblind, but I'd be, I call myself color irrelevant. I don't really care. But everybody, it used to be grays, and then it was limes, and then it was, you know, all these different colors and different shapes, and that stuff changes so rapidly with the trends that we're, that, you know, we're, we're showing, and, ooh, I want to do this now. And that's my only concern with how deep into the weeds we want to get, because things constantly change. I mean, geez, in, in thirty years from now, power bills may be so high that we want all glass buildings, because they're all, the glass made by Tesla, and that's what operates the building, you know, for the energy. I mean, who knows?
It's also not citywide, it's just certain streets that they want to.
Right.
Look a certain way.
And, and so, but if we opened up here, we have the, the crawl, you know, well, it, it worked for this, so let's, let's continue to crawl in, in, into more areas. So, so in, in our discussions, in our minds, we keep in mind how far we want government to, to play that, how deep we want to get. So we, so it doesn't become limiting, but it doesn't become a ghetto.
So I think one, one thing to, uh, I guess where my mind kind of went as you were talking about that, Tom, is that, um.
Most people's mind just went off someplace else.
Yeah, so, you know, there are, I would say, in most areas of town, allowing things to follow architectural trends is, you know, may not be a bad thing, right? But what do we want along these main drags? You know, do we want these main drags following architectural trends, which ends up very much dating each, each facility along there as to what era it was built in? Or do we want to try to maintain some type of consistency in the aesthetic, right? And so that, that's, I guess, uh, in my mind, that's kind of the question. And if we want to try to keep some consistency in the aesthetic, is what we have now appropriate? Or is there something we can do to improve it, right?
So in ninety-seven, this ordinance has been around before that. In ninety-seven, uh, Steve Corey, Terry Jones, the, the Carter brothers built a beautiful glass story building at three, three, seven, uh, South Main. Today, that building would not be allowed, but it wasn't allowed then. And, and then we go to the, the extreme on the north end, we have LeBarre cabinets, and I don't think it's an unattractive building, but it's a, I think it's orange if I'm not mistaken. Does anybody know what I'm talking about? You know, it's, it's a, it's a straight metal building. And then we have a brand new building that was built two years ago. Oh my gosh, it's not Imperial Window, right next to the jail, directly.
Elite door and window.
Elite door and window, that's a, you know, a metal building. And, and the ordinance existed then. Again, I don't think they're unattractive, I'm, I'm just wondering.
Isn't that what we're trying to do, is try to spell out what takes away some of the ambiguity and gives the city kind of tools to actually enforce?
I think that is part of it. It, now, has, has it been completely enforced on some of those buildings in years past? Obviously, no.
And I'm not throwing stones, I'm.
No, no, I don't think you are. I'm just trying to answer that question, why we have some of it.
But we're think, what, what's, this is before you. You know, a lot of these buildings.
So.
So we're too restrictive, where are we too restrictive? I mean, what's, I mean, I get, I get the whole, it's ambiguous a little bit.
Well, let's, let's move forward a little bit, if you don't mind, Chair.
Yep.
Next slide, Kent? These are just some examples of different building materials. And I think, uh, and I threw these in there, these are, these are three different Walmarts, three different towns. I think they're all Utah, if I'm not mistaken. None of them are ours. But there is quite a, I think there's a stark difference in what you see here, right? So probably the one in the top right hand corner, I don't know, that's probably ninety percent, you know, architectural block, CMU type product. I think these other two, and this is my humble opinion, are a much better fit if it was on Main Street. Or two hundred north, again.
Oh, definitely warmer than the top right.
Yeah.
Definitely warmer.
Anyways, next slide, Kent? I threw these in for fun, you know, I mean, architecture, I, I'm sure these are beautiful buildings, and I think they're all by famous architects.
And they probably fit where they're built.
But I don't think it's Main and two hundred.
I don't, I don't think that building from Las Vegas would, I don't know where you could put it in this valley that it would fit, other than the landfill. It would look good out at the landfill.
You, you should be, you should be doing this presentation, I think, not, not me. All right, next slide, Kent?
So if we go back, go back to that one last picture of the U, could that building with all that glass across the front, could that be on Main Street?
Not under our current ordinance, no.
Okay.
There's a new one that looks similar to it, right there on the corner of three hundred West and Center, or three hundred West and two hundred South. That new music building.
It's not on Main.
Yeah, yeah, it's not on Main, but it, it fits, it's.
We don't have any say over the university.
Yeah, well, no, nobody does.
That, the building on Third West by the university, I think that's one of the coolest buildings in town, my son thinks it's the coolest building in town, so it is very subjective.
I agree with you.
You have this, and this, you have those two buildings just.
And I, I don't want to tell somebody why they can't build within reason.
The architectural design to me doesn't matter anywhere near as much as, how do I want to say this? Some of the garbage I see, uh, around, some of the rentals that are just kind of thrown together, I don't, I don't know how we would regulate that, uh, but, I don't know. I, I've built houses where I have not liked what the owner put on the outside, but they wanted it, so fair enough. So I, I don't know. I, I, I agree with Tom, I'm not sure how much government wants to be involved here. So, I don't know. Tough deal. There's homes in this town that I really liked, there was a home up on the hill that people really highly criticized up on Lay Hill, because the color, they didn't like it. And I didn't like it either, but fair enough, that owner liked it, so I, I didn't have a problem with it. So I don't know, I don't know how much we do want to get involved, that's an interesting conundrum, isn't it?
Luckily, Utah passed their own legislation for residential homes. It kind of prevented cities from cracking down too much on, on any of this kind of stuff, but it doesn't apply to historic districts or commercial buildings.
Say, say that again, Jase, what?
So House Bill one zero zero three prevents cities from, from mandating certain architectural materials or colors for residential.
And residential, so okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I, I get that, you know, we don't want government to come in and, you know, regulate everything. That being said, we do want, um, like these guys have said, we do want the Main Street to look nice and presentable, because that's, that's where people come in and they're, you know, and they're willing to stay, willing to put money down on something, willing to move their businesses here and provide jobs and, and things like that. We have several, um, companies that have actually relocated their employees here because of Cedar City, and it's not just because of Main Street, but it's, it's because of everything, it's the complete package.
But I think every style of building, well, maybe not every style, but almost every style of building can look really nice. I think Elite Door and Window is a great looking building, I really like it, even though it's a, you know, it's a steel building, and there's a lot of steel buildings.
And it's functional for them, they built, they built for their needs, not for what their neighbors.
And, uh, all the graphics placed across the street, Rainbow, Rainbow, is that what it is? That's a good looking building, so I like those buildings, so, I don't know, it's, that's an interesting deal.
Yeah, it, it is tough.
It is tough.
It is tough, I, I admit.
And I agree, I really appreciate what Maverick did. We didn't like what they were doing, they came back with a change and, and said, what do you want? And they said, well, you'd like this, and they said, okay, and they did it, so. Uh, even though I'm opposed to the Maverick being there, they did a great job with it, and we made the best of it, so, it's good stuff.
I think it looks fantastic.
It looks.
And I wanted it there, but.
Very good looking building.
But I, I think that Maverick's a good example of.
It's gonna take me six months to get used to not going to the one on eight hundred West, but it's a good looking building.
Prime example, though, is the hotel that we're doing, the Hampton Inn. Otherwise, we would have just followed the Hampton prototype, it would have been all stucco. I'm glad that we had to break, I think it looks nicer.
I think, I think it fits.
It'll look better.
It blends in, it welcomes people to our community.
Good point.
This thing in Las Vegas, can you imagine something like that on Main Street?
Or anywhere.
When people get off and say, holy, those people are insane, I'm, I'm gonna fill with gas and I'm out of here.
I can't imagine any locale where that fit in, fits in.
At the top.
I mean, it's just a.
Urban gets away with a lot more.
San Francisco and Las Vegas.
I've spent a lot of time in Vegas, I can't think of a place in Vegas I'd like to see that. That's just me.
The landfill.
The landfill is a good point.
I do agree with Jennifer, though, that charm plays a role.
Good point.
In the city, and if you drive, if you drive throughout Utah and go through certain little cities, you're like, okay, it's charming here, I like it. Others you go through and like.
Others you go through and like, yeah.
So sorry, guys, I have a date.
So I look at that, I look at that Las Vegas photo, and, and the main thing I, I think when I look at that is, I'm just glad our climate doesn't allow for those upside-down toilet bowl brushes that line the street right there, so.
You don't, you don't like the daypalm?
Sneak out, sorry, guys.
Yeah, those, those toilet bowl brushes, yeah, I'm not real fond of those as a decoration.
I'm not a big fan of palms either, but those are like the best-looking ones.
Okay.
It's the daypalm. Let's, let's do the next slide, if you guys don't mind, Kent. So, we've had some input from Mr. Melling, and we really spun our wheels as staff, too. I mean, in consideration of trying to think about what makes the most sense, right? The first thing we thought is, we should get rid of this preferred and discouraged kind of language, either we're asking for something, or we're not, right? So, what we ended up with, and staff is not married to this, that's, that's why we're here, is permitted building materials. So we have our traditional materials, corried stone, cultured stone, full brick veneer, composite lap siding, restruck hardy plank, architectural concrete or stucco with recess, recess panels and reveal lines, and then we, there's no perfect magic number here, but we thought we'd start with sixty percent, so we would not have a complete stucco box. Aluminum composite.
The building can be up to sixty percent.
That would be up to sixty, as we wrote this, yeah.
All right.
I mean, I think we all recognize that stucco is a desired material to use, I mean, there's, there's no doubt about it, but a complete stucco building, I don't think, is Cedar City. And then we threw this in, and, and staff has kind of enforced it this way, other materials that emulate the permitted materials. I mean, there's, there's new products coming online every day, you know, something that's superior, better, potentially cheaper. So our thought is, if the intent is the aesthetic impact of these materials, if we have a different material that achieves that intent, and Reynolds not here, so I can say intent today, all I want, then we thought that would be appropriate. We changed accent materials to permitted materials at no more than twenty-five percent of the facade, so precast concrete, which certainly we'd like to see downtown as accent, glass accents, except for mirrored glass, wood, metal walls, colored architectural block, and other materials that emulate these materials, so we, we kind of went down that same road. There can be, I think you mentioned the Sign Company, and their name's escaping, they have some metal, there's no doubt they're using it. We've seen some come in where they, they do use some corrugated metal as, as an accent, it's not the full building, doesn't look like it belongs in industrial zone, that can work quite well. We landed on prohibited materials, prohibited materials as your plain gray, flat face CMU, vinyl siding, obviously plywood siding and mirrored glass. The one that Mr. Melling may want to speak to under the preferred mater, I'm sorry, permitted materials would be aluminum composite. I'm not super familiar with those materials. And then if you go down one more there, Kent, and, and you guys feel free to jump in any time. We were trying to give some better guidance for staff here a little bit. So what we said is, when we're looking at these plans, if they come by our desk, that we would look at it on one plane. So if, let's say a, a commercial building had a porch, and they've got columns, and those columns are wrapped in brick or stone or something like that, we're not pushing in beyond that, we're just looking at it on one plane and do the percentages that way. That the frontage shall mean the elevation facing the streets where it's applicable, and for the first thirty feet of any side, similar to the way it's written now, we would not be looking at people's storefront windows as glass, people need their storefront windows. And we've landed on you get at least use two of these materials. Down to letter C, I, I think.
Hey, Don, can I ask you a question on? Yeah. On B-two, I guess my, my question on that, we had a lot of discussion on that dance studio.
We did.
Out in the Fiddler's Canyon area.
Mm-hmm.
The, the way this is written, that side that is exposed to Main Street, that's not the front of the building, are we saying that that would, that the material requirements would not apply?
Well, if I wrote this correctly, in my opinion, it would be the elevation that is facing Main Street. Now, if it's not clear, we got to make it clear.
So, and also the applicable streets, and we're talking just about Main Street and Two Hundred North to fifty-six.
Okay, because when, when I read that, I thought, well, the, the street that it actually fronts on, so to speak, is that local street to the east of it. So that, that, and maybe there's some clarification that's needed.
Yeah, there certainly could be.
Okay.
No, no doubt, no doubt we could use some clarification. I, I think these, again, this is my opinion, I think the material requirements become even more important when we get between Two Hundred North and Two Hundred South. Where, where we really, it's, it's the last remaining of our historic core, so we, we tightened it a little bit. And this isn't perfect by any means, we should probably run this by our Downtown Economic Committee, but where we landed today was permitted building materials are limited to corried stone, cultured stone, full brick veneer and composite lap siding, other materials maybe use it no more than twenty-five percent. And then we thought the entire building should be treated as such. So this, that would just be this narrow corridor where we're sitting right now. I think a more traditional look without writing lofty language that you should meet the character of the neighborhood, which is difficult to do. We're trying to tighten that strike zone, so to speak, right in this historic area, and I'm not saying this is perfect by any means. And then lastly, I don't want to beat folks up that are rehabbing, rehabbing an existing building that doesn't comply. So if you're fixing up your stucco, or you're stripping it off and putting new, and it doesn't comply, I don't want staff to be in the business of chasing those. So, that's where we're at, it's, it's open to the commission, I know Melling's got some comments for sure.
Just one, one, one final thought, then I'll shut up. Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, because I have to run, but I think this is quite phenomenal, something that's really needed, and I like the way you've couched the wording, you know, and I think the intent is right where we want to, where, where we want to go, so hats off.
I agree.
I, I just want to, one, one quick, keep one, keep one thing in mind, and, and Jace is, is directed toward Jace, because Jace does a lot of, his and his family do a lot of building. Make sure the building they can do off of Main Street, and I'm just picking on you because you're building a new building right now, there won't be a significant cost difference enough, assuming he chooses to go, you know, less, less premium materials, there won't be a cost difference enough on the overall project that, well, I'm trying to rent mine and get a return, and he won't have a problem renting his and get a return. If that makes any sense, what I'm trying to say.
It does.
Yeah. And it's not directed towards your building, you're just building a new one.
And I think, correct me if I wrong, but Mr. Melling did go over that with your group of people, you know, of doing some cost comparisons and things of, is it even logical to try to produce this, you know, things like that, but you can clear that up, but I did see that in your notes.
Yeah, so, yeah, Tyler Melling, I, we, we have a few different people and different trades that we've ran things by. I think we're really close to where this needs to be. It's, it's really hard to tell someone, you know, if you have property, we're, we're developing a few different areas of Main right now, and it's really hard to tell a business owner, sorry, you can't be on Main Street, the city doesn't want you there, because you can't pay the price to have it look the way Cedar City wants you to have it look, right? That's, that's a hard conversation to have. And, and I, you know, I, I think if, if you don't want metal buildings, there are some businesses that you're just not going to have anymore, and that's, that's, that's why we have elected officials, they get to make the decision on whose rights matter more than others, right? That's, that's how it works. But I think it's good to revisit this and, and look at some of the things we have, I think, I really appreciate Don working on this, because it's, it's, we're really close. I think opening up stucco up to sixty percent is a huge savings, because you can do a lot of nice things where you're using stucco to infill. You want something that, you know, we have wind, and we, when we do have precipitation, it falls hard and it falls at an angle, and stucco is very good at, generally, as long as they do the flashing right, it's very good at preventing moisture from entering the building, right? A lot more than a lot of types of siding or, or other materials. Opening up aluminum composite, which is a premium product, it's certainly not a cost savings, but it's a nice accent, and it, you know, they make it to look like wood, they make it to look like metal panels, they make it to look like siding, there's, there's a lot of things that can be used for. I think, you know, opening it up and, and, because a lot of people, if you have an architect that's not familiar with working with the city, they may not know, oh, that, you know, this is the city's practice, as, as long as it looks like this, right? So they may, so, so to look at something and say, oh, well, if these materials look like these other things, then that really helps a lot. The, I, I think also specifying that lap siding doesn't mean necessarily hardy plank, I can't think of any commercial applications we'd be using out on right now, but you're seeing in Saddleback a lot of, now I'm blanking on it, LP, LP siding is being used in lieu of kind of the old vinyl siding, it's, it's more than vinyl siding, traditional, but it's, it's a better look, and it's generally a little cheaper than hardy board. The, one of the things I would like to touch on, though, that, that we'd, I think would help a lot on the architectural side, because I, in, in practice, it's, it's on, yeah, it's on this page, that B-two, where the frontage will mean the elevation facing the streets and the first thirty feet of any side, a lot of times, if you have an architectural wrap, you're not going thirty feet, right? You're going between eight and fifteen, generally, depending on the size of your column. But whatever you're doing, you're going to want it to match up to that point, and then maybe you're going to use another primary material, like for certain hotels, maybe they do have more of a stucco type of look, we see that a lot with hotels, again, because of the water issues and, and some other stuff, right?
How do you classify the new Sizzler in your new building? Because underneath that facade, there's stucco buildings, aren't they? That, as I saw them go up, it looked like stucco, and then you've put the brick veneer on them, so I think they look fantastic.
Yeah, and the, it's, it's, for this, it would be classified by what you see, so the veneer, right? And, and even though there's a gray coat underneath.
There is a layer between the building and the veneer that's protective.
Right, but I, you know, as they're going up, I thought, stucco, holy, holy moly, what are they just doing? And then they put the veneer on it, and I said, I know exactly what they're doing.
Yeah, and a lot of times, even if you do leave a stucco layer with that synthetic coat, you have a lot more options now than you used to. I grew up in San Antonio where everything was masonry, because you could exploit illegal labor at below minimum wage, so it was a lot cheaper to build everything out of full block masonry, right? But it, it just, it just depends on where you're at, right? Here, we don't really do that as much, so it is a lot more expensive to, to do full block masonry, so you'll do a veneer instead. But, no, I, I think, anyway, I think we're really close. We would, our, our company would love to see this work through the process sooner than later, just because we're still working on lease negotiations with different mix of local companies and national chains that are looking at the North Main area, but we can't lock in rates as it stands, because we're, you know, just as, as the ordinance says right now, it is about a five percent cost difference on their lease rate. If, if it has to be primarily masonry or, or otherwise look like the building we just did for Starbucks and Johnny Macs. We would like to have a similar style, but if we could use a little bit more stucco and, and lap siding, it, it certainly lowers the cost drastically, and it's, and it, you know, five percent on a, on a lease rate is, is a big difference for, for a small company.
So one quick silly question. Does this apply to all four sides of the building?
Well, that's what we were getting at with this, is, is it, it's just the side fronting Main, you're going to want it to match architecturally, but that would be my only critique of, of that B-two, is, is you're also looking at the first thirty feet on either side as you go, come off of the street. But architecturally, that might be harder to match, because a lot of times your wrap on a column or a projection only is eight to fifteen feet. So I would like to maybe see that closer to, say, ten feet, knowing, again, if you have the Main Street face look a certain way, you're going to roughly match that, but, especially on whatever wrap you're using for that corner. But it would be nice to start with whatever other material you're using. Generally, in a lot of them, it would probably be primarily stucco with some other lap or other siding accents, but you may exceed the sixty percent off of that Main Street facade.
I'd like to see the sides to be allowed to not have any of the requirements, and just strictly stucco in the front that faces the Two Hundred or faces Main Street. Because that's, people aren't looking at the side of the building, they're looking at the front of the building.
Right.
I do agree more with you that wrap it a little, maybe not thirty feet, but.
Thirty feet almost seems like it would be weird or in ten.
And it, it is weird.
It's like not enough to be like the whole thing, but it just stops.
It, it does create some weird stuff.
Ten is still part of the front, but.
Just wrap it five feet around the, the front, then?
Just, yeah, it, it depends on the depth of your structure, what angle, what oblique angle you may be sitting at. Really.
That would be my, I, I, everything else, I, I think is great. And sorry if I sound like I'm opposed to everything, I just want to know what we're, what we're trying to think of our, in ourselves, because we're still a relatively conservative community, we want to limit too much government, but I, I would like to see it maybe five feet on the sides, maybe even, and, and on, and on the rear, zero on the rear, of course, because then only.
The lower that side wrap, the, the more architectural freedom you have to make the wrap look natural.
Right.
The, the wider it is, the harder you're going to be trying to shove that square nail into the circular hole.
So is that, are we, is five feet within the?
I, I think, I think anything less than about eight feet, you're not, you're going to no longer be restricting the architectural decisions, because you're just going to wrap it in a way that looks more natural.
Right.
I think even five feet is great. I, I don't, I can't think of any applications where you're not going to have some kind of return.
Right.
To match the style, because for weatherproofing and everything else, that, it just makes sense. But depending on the types of projections you're doing, thirty feet kind of makes it a little longer.
Those who aren't building commercial buildings or involved, everybody thinks landlords are rich, well, they can be, but they, they take a huge, a huge financial risk and enslave themselves for a long time with debt. And with their, no guarantee, no one's out here guaranteeing that we're going to be able to rent our buildings out or get a return significant enough to, to carry, you know, carry us through. So I think we need to show a certain level of respect to the people that are willing to take the risk.
So I have a question, Tyler, for you, if you don't mind. On that question of the thirty feet, and you saying maybe something less makes more sense, I mean, we definitely don't want the idea that, well, there's just this sharp corner right at, at the corner of the building, and we're going to have one material that comes right to this point, and then another going the other way, right? We want some kind of corner treatment that makes sense, that helps pull it all together. Is there a way to? Is there a way to accomplish that without trying to specify a minimum number of feet? Is there something in the industry that makes sense that say, your, this treatment has to be, has to match this? But, and I don't know what that's called.
Yeah, I mean, depending on what you're using, a projection wrap, a column wrap, I'm not an architect, you know, that. And, and I think, I think what Don has tried to state here gets really close to that. I think, I, I think really what you do is, is if you state this, and you just have a lower number of feet extension, then the architect, because, because we have to use architects for any commercial jobs anyway, then the architect has the freedom to do whatever makes sense with that application that's still gonna make sense. Because at the end of the day, there are stamps on it, they don't want it to look ugly, so they're gonna want it to match. But I, I know, you know, for example, the Starbucks building, we ran into a little bit of a hiccup. Don was good to work with us on it. We, we had some metal paneling that didn't really match the ordinance. It looked nice, it just, you know.
It, it looked fine.
It's on the book.
Aluminum product that we're.
No, and, and then, so we looked at an alternate product, and, and at the end of the day, we just said, screw it, we're gonna use hardy board, and that's what we did, so.
Rather than put our planning, our, our planner in, maybe we need to get, because every time in the past, it's always, oh, see, you're a design professional, see, you're a design professional.
Right.
Maybe we need to give the planner, if something doesn't quite work, some authority, because they don't like, and you've seen it, hey, look, we, we follow the rules, this is what the ordinance says, and don't, don't ask me to vary, because I don't want to lose my job, or be criticized, or favoritism, or maybe we need to give the planner some authority, and then if it doesn't work, the plant, that developer can go directly, without going through Planning Commission, directly to the, the city council, ask for a variance on that type of material.
So there, there are a couple things that I think help in, in this that weren't in place a year ago, or maybe it was a little over a year ago, that we were getting permitting for that. One of those changes would be to shorten the amount of the return, because the return made sense, but then that metal paneling started within 30 feet, right? Because you don't usually have a wrap that goes 30 feet back, right? I think it went back maybe 15, and we picked up another 15 of that metal paneling, which was exclusively, you know, prohibited. It would now be allowed, but in addition to that, it does say that staff can approve other materials that look like the permitted materials, and we've now added enough permitted materials. We, we factored in, I think, just about every architectural style.
So we are giving staff a little bit of leeway, then?
Yeah, so I, I think.
Is there an appeal if?
I mean, we could always appeal stuff, but nobody has time for that, you know?
Certainly on something like this, if, if Melling and I are wrestling about, does this emulate something? You can always appeal that decision to the Board of Adjustments.
Right. And, but at the end of the day, I mean, if you're waiting on a permit, I mean, for us, we were in the penalties stage of, of permitting, because we had tenants that we owed to as well.
I'm just trying to give.
So we, we just had to move forward, so.
So they can feel comfortable, given some, I'm gonna use the word variance, and without, without sinking the developer.
Right.
And so.
And I think this new language gives a lot more breadth to that. So I, I think, I mean, we ran this by several people in our office and in the trades that we work with, and, and this encompasses just about everything that we're, that we're looking at. I mean, we do have another site that is much more difficult to develop, much less desirable for development, so we can't command the same rent, and that one's still going to be tough. It's going to be tough with any design standards, because really, that location, the only thing that pencils out is a metal shed, right? But Cedar doesn't want that on Main Street, so we'll just have to find something else that'll work.
So if you changed B2 from 30 to what would make you happy?
I, I think the lower, the better, because, so, it's like lot widths, right? So the city changed lot widths, oh, a year and a half, two years ago.
Yeah.
So in R2-1, it's now 50 feet. I don't know of anyone who's doing 50 feet, right? We saw a lot of lots at 70 feet when the minimum was 70. Now that the minimum is 50, we're seeing a lot of them at like 55 to 65.
Your setbacks impact that.
Right, your setbacks impact that. There's other restraints, right? So if you see everybody trying to meet the minimum, then your minimum maybe isn't set the right way, you know? And, and I, I would think the same for this. 30 feet is gonna create some wonky architectural decisions. I think if you set it at something like five, you're almost never gonna see five, you're gonna see something between eight and 15, maybe more. But it allows more architectural flexibility.
It does. Do, do keep in mind that it does, the ordinance, let's say we have a brick facade on the front. It doesn't say you must continue brick 30 feet. You would certainly want some return to make it look right, but it does say you have to use one of these other materials. Or it could be brick or other materials. So we're not dictating the length of a wrap, so to speak, but we are dictating the materials apply in that 30 feet. That's the difference.
Right, yeah. And I, I think if, anyway, so I would just think if you, if you have it lower, you're gonna get a better work product than at 30. And I don't know what the magic number is, it's certainly higher than five. I'm not sure anything over 15 is gonna have the result you want. So whatever you decide on that is fine.
Would that be 10?
I think 10 is also safe.
10 always sounds official.
So if I. Leave it at five feet.
If I'm hearing direction from the commission, it seems like the commission would like to entertain less than 30. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
I mean, I see a lot of heads nodding, so. We can certainly return.
Would you entertain five?
Something like that.
And then if we need, if the developer needs it more, then that's up to them.
Yeah. In, in practice, you're gonna get most of them eight to 15. For, for any kind of column or projection, you'll see it at eight to 15 feet, generally.
Right, and so I don't want it to say 10 and have the eight to 15 already cut at the knees, and so.
Yeah, well, because that is, because OSB comes in four by eight sheets, right? So that's why eight feet is a nice, if you're gonna set a minimum, eight would, would probably be the highest I would like to go, just because you do have some, that's another, several sheets of OSB that have to be cut. If, the minute you go above eight, you might as well go to 16.
So what do you want?
I'm not an architect.
What, what are you saying? I said five feet, and then if you, if people need more, they need more.
And I, I think five feet would be nice. In most situations, eight is gonna be cheaper than five.
Right, but as a minimum.
As a minimum.
If you say five, you're only, you're only gonna see eight, but I still would rather that than 10, when now you can't do eight.
Right.
All right, we will come back.
One other thing, actually, like, and Melling talked, touched on it a little bit with the LP siding, but think back 20 years ago, and go into your grandma's house and look at the linoleum flooring, and you just think to yourself, like, vinyl flooring is the worst stuff on earth. Fast forward, and almost every single building you see that has any kind of cheap flooring is, is vinyl planks now, and they look fantastic. We're gonna see the same thing in vinyl siding in the next few years, we're already starting to see it. So I'm a little hesitant on the previous page to have vinyl in there, but at the same time, I think you need to say something, because if you just allow any vinyl, there's some hideous, terrible vinyl out there. But there's also, kind of like what LP is to hardy board, there are some luxury, look, luxury vinyl planks right now that you could put up that would look better than LP even. And so it's just, it's just tough to kind of get into the weeds of.
It is, and that's where we're trying to keep that, does it emulate?
Do you think maybe?
That's difficult.
Maybe on that permitted, if, instead of composite lap siding, we just said lap siding?
Like wood or metal grain lap siding, something that's not just gonna allow just flats to move.
Now granted.
That's what I'm saying, is a lot of the vinyl now has wood grain.
Yeah.
And, and looks really nice.
And, and granted, with, with a lot of the vinyl siding now, I, I think you're right, Jace, the, like in a commercial application, if we were building a property that we were gonna own and be a landlord for, we probably wouldn't do vinyl siding today, right? But if we wanted that look and something a little more durable.
I haven't used it yet, but I've seen a lot of it.
Right, we, we do an LP product, or a hardy product, or something like that.
How durable, and you can educate me, how durable.
You know, I haven't used it yet, but, I mean, it's, it seems like the new stuff's pretty durable.
It's attractive.
Yeah.
It's only getting better, because they're starting to realize, like, there's some value into creating a, manufactured product that looks real, and looks legit, but is also nearly indestructible.
Right.
And I think that's where vinyl siding is going to end up. I'm not positive, because I haven't used it yet.
I, I agree, in 10 years, it's gonna be a different story. And, I mean, we already see that with fencing, right? Vinyl fences today are completely different than vinyl fences 20 years ago.
Now they cost not as much as blocks, so.
Yeah. So, but yeah, I, I, maybe we would.
But like Tyler said, I'm not using it, so like, it's not restricted to me to have that word in there.
Right.
But I'm just thinking, like, yeah, in a few years, it's, we're probably gonna see it more and more. But we can also change that in when it happens.
Yep.
Okay, well, as staff, I, I think we've got some decent direction here. We can bring something back. I think we'd probably be looking at the first part of January and, and try to get a recommendation out of this. I mean, Tyler and I could talk, I'd still like to talk a little bit more about that composite aluminum, is that, I think that's how we wrote it?
Yeah, ACM.
Yeah.
So are we taking the rough edges off this, and eventually the, the city council will?
I think it's ready to bring back to you guys in some shape or form here.
Yeah, and we would love to see that, because we, we would love to, I mean, I was, I was just talking to Kent a couple weeks ago. We're working on submitting a master site plan for, for everything between that new Starbucks and Western Ag credit.
I think my, my only, my only small hesitation is what we've changed for the downtown, I mean, the downtown core. I'll talk to, talk to Dave tomorrow and see if maybe, if they're having a meeting this December.
Well, if it's not going to affect, we're not asking really to make any changes to our downtown core.
The way it's written, it's actually more restrictive than what it was. So that we might want.
In our downtown core.
That's the way I crafted it.
Okay.
We're, we're, we're kind of loosening it and, and.
We have to make, we, so thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, so I, I, I don't want to speak for them, I, I think most of them would like the more traditional, the brick, the, the concrete, et cetera, et cetera. But if we are making it more restrictive, it would be nice to have some input from them, I think. If they have a meeting in December, I'll get it in front of them for some comments.
In December?
And I, I think, I think, Don, I, I think with the downtown, what you've put in here pretty much matches all of the recent projects downtown, except for maybe, you know, what we see in some of the older buildings, there is stucco on that backside, and, and maybe that's something.
There is, you see some of the brick covered up. I would imagine that the new hotel wouldn't quite meet this either.
Right.
With the amount of stucco utilized on the hotel. And the hotel looks pretty nice. So, but I'll, I'll try to make that effort and see, see what we come up with.
That works for you, then? You feel like you can progress a little bit?
Oh, yeah, I, I think we've got good direction, and I, I do want to see what, if I can get some input from.
Well, and I think, based upon what Tyler said too, sooner rather than later is better, so.
Yeah, I will say, though, if there isn't a meeting with the downtown folks we can get in in December, then we probably need to push far enough into January that we can meet with them before bringing it to you.
Fair enough.
Or we could separate that part, the downtown port part.
So if you take out the more restrictive, my concern for the downtown folks is the opposite.
No, I'm saying separate, take the downtown section out and make that two different areas, so we don't put any limitations or, or slow down a, a potential development.
Well, and maybe, maybe if, if, if I could suggest, maybe the schedule be that, you know, this comeback to Planning Commission, you know, first cycle, because I know there's, because of the, because of the public notice requirement, if it came back to Planning Commission first cycle of, of January, and also went, you know, sometime before the, before it went to council for a decision, it also went to that downtown board, just to look at that one paragraph, then, you know, then, then we may still be able to get on. I, I think the key would be getting it on the second cycle of January for council's agenda. So they won't be making a decision until the last Wednesday of January. But that way, you know, that way our timeline's good, but then you'll have time to also get with downtown before then.
Well, we'll see if we can herd all those cats and.
Yeah.
Into a box.
Yeah.
And if we do get it with city council, if we could, if we do get it with Planning Commission, if we could schedule on the, the closest city council work meeting there is, so it could like, I could go today, and then the meeting would be tomorrow, that type of, of situation.
Yeah, and I, and I know many on the council have already expressed interest in looking at this. It's just a matter of what it is when it's all done, right? So, anyway, appreciate all your work on this and the time you've all spent tonight on this, so.
Good, thank you, we appreciate your work.
Enjoy your night.
Staff, speaking of timelines, my hourglass runs out in about two minutes. Can we punt the, how, how big of a discussion do we need to have on the?
It can be super quick. I'll go to that power point.
Or we could not, and wait for the other members to come that might have some input.
That's true, that's a good point.
Now, let's, let's just.
It's hard this time of year, because parties and, and activities.
Yeah.
And I know you said we're for sure to it, but we weren't planning on having.
No, well, this was a good discussion, I think this is the kind of discussion we need to have when we have the time and the inclination to think about it, you know? And we are all running out of inclination at the moment. Anyway, so let's push that one, and maybe we can put on, you know, keep moving it and we'll. All right.
I think you've done great on this.
I love it.
These things, the materials and stuff, you've put in some time and thought, and I think it's gonna work.
Amber had a lot to do with this, too.
It's gonna make the city inviting the people, that's what it's all about, is.
If nobody likes it, it's Amber's.
If we like her, she does good.
Awesome, thank you, everybody.